This is Monday, August 14th, 2017. It's 4:30 PM. We are in the Thomas Jason with Council chambers. We will be rolling downhill tonight. I do want to, well, let's see. We've got a 10-year award. Sharon Stonehouse, looking forward to that. Forty-five years of service. We've got Mayor's awards. Number three, we've got a public hearing consideration of sale of property locally known as 914 Louisa Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tislin.
Yes, again, this is a property the city acquired a while ago through our abandoned building program. It's a vacant lot. The home was in a condition that needed to be demolished and did have the neighbor at 11 or 1226 South 10th Street just recently submit a application to purchase the property just to expand his lot size. Did have someone else call, possibly interested in building an actual house there. Didn't know if that was something they wanted to go forward with, but did let him know of the meeting date. The neighbor to the north would express interest in taking it regardless.
Okay. Counsel, are we good?
Is there a bid that we should?
Five hundred dollars from the neighbor to the north.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, sir.
Good?
Under the conditions, it does lay out a little bit more if someone is to purchase it, what their timeframe is, just so it's more clear.
Thank you, sir. Number four, public hearing consideration of ordinance, admitting the code of ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa by amending the standard penalty for violation of the city code. It's going to be the first reading on that, Chief?
Yeah, just briefly, this is in regards to the indigent defense bill. Bottom line, if there's a criminal sanction or jail time incarceration underneath the city code, the city statute, we could be held responsible for that charge for the defense, the defense of the individual charged under that code.
Really?
So, we're just recommending we change that to leave the fines in place. And if there's a situation that would lead to that, I mean, we mirror almost every state code that there is, and so it can still be charged under our state code.
Okay.
This is recommendations of our city attorney.
Okay. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay.
Explain that very well. Thank you, Chief.
Number five, is a consideration of a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Weingard Realty Company for the Rock Island Freight House property at 710 North Front Street.
This is locally known as the Big Muddy's property. The City of Burlington owns the land underneath the property, and our lease agreement is a land lease with Weingard Realty Company. They did express an interest in renewing this agreement at this time. It was set to expire in 2031, so it had 14 years left, but looking at a different, they subleased the property out, looking at a new subtenant for that property and wanting a longer period, initial period for them to come in initially and operate that. So that would give them the full 25 years under the first
I see.
term, and then that additional 25-year renewal. So, both attorneys for the city and for Weingard have reviewed it. Didn't have any questions. Did, the only change was kept the initial term $3,000. That's what the annual payment was for the existing one set to expire in 2031. Kept that at 3,000 and up the further 25-year renewal to $6,000. So, those were the only changes in the lease. And then some just minor language at the end of the lease, I think, that added in by our attorney.
Under number 12, condition of lease. Says she'll provide leasing with an unobstructed view of the lease premises due east of Mississippi with the exception of the existing Coast Guard building. What is that?
12. Don't believe those are there any longer, so.
That's what I thought.
It's been part of the lease probably for a long time.
Yeah.
We could probably get that taken out.
I'm trying to think where's the building, east of Big Muddy's.
Okay. You good? Before we go to number six, I wanted to do this right on the onset of the meeting. My computer wasn't working, but I have an announcement that I need to make, and I'm going to read an email. And after I make this announcement, we're going to move through this meeting. I just want to say that I've got no comments now and I have any comments after the meeting, so. But I've received an email from Councilman Scott today. I take that back, it was yesterday. And it reads, "Mayor, effective immediately, I am resigning my seat on council. The council has a very important job to do the next few months. I'll have to work closely with staff, and at this time I am a distraction for the council and staff." Tim Scott.
I think we should table that at this time.
All right. Not that.
Okay. Hold that thought, brother.
Actually, that'll come up. Kathleen will prepare whatever needs done for the regular council meeting for responding on that and provide some advice for what your options are at that point, too.
Okay, good.
Okay. We actually have number six, public hearing consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Jefferson Street parking improvements. Jesse?
I'm Jesse Howes, city engineer. What we have for you here is prepared set of plans and specifications for Jefferson Street. Real brief overview, you can see what it is now versus what it will be. Top is what it is now, bottom is what it will be. The basic project background on this is we're revamping the 200 block of Jefferson Street to provide more parking. The new concept includes 18 total spaces, two handicap with fully accessible ramps, two police business-only parking spots down towards the east end on the south side, and 14 standard public use spaces. About a month ago, we had a meeting with the stakeholders in the project. You can see them listed there, police, fire, downtown partners, and parks. We took quite a bit of input from that meeting and incorporated, you know, all the things the various departments were looking for into the plans and specs, and we have a finished set now. So, next slide. Couple of things that you'll note here that I wanted to mention to everybody. On the left-hand picture, you can see that joint line. That will effectively be the new curb, so parking will come up to that joint line. All of the light posts will be moved back. The planters will be removed, and all the trees will be removed on the south side of that block. On the north side, it'll be not the joint line over top there, but the one to the left. So, in removing back to that joint line, that'll be where the parallel parking is. So, you'll remove the planters, the trees, and most of the light posts will stay, but a couple of them will get located back closer to the buildings. The only thing this may be problematic in is any kind of outside cafe seating. I just wanted to mention that, but there is still space to maneuver those in there, but they'll take some modification to get the same footprint that you were getting before, so.
Can you repeat to me again what's going to be missing from my picture on the right?
On the right? Okay. So, everything stays except the planters. All the planters come out because they're straddling that joint line.
Okay.
So, we'll take those out. Everything where those came out will be poured back with the exposed aggregate, so it matches the rest of the panels surrounding it. And then those areas will be parking. Really, the only thing on this side is moving light posts back and taking out the big tree planters.
Because obviously parking is a problem, but we still, you know, trying to find that happy medium, so.
Right. And you'll still have the tree wells, the metal ring type structures there that house the trees, but you just won't have the big elevated planter boxes that
Yeah.
were proving problematic when it came time to cut those down and remove the stumps and things of that nature.
For the trees that are being removed on, that are just being removed completely, are they going to be moved or just cut down?
I think they're just cut down and disposed of, yeah.
I've got a problem with that, ma'am.
Any other questions on this one?
How long will this take?
Okay.
Next slide.
I forgot my last slide.
Last slide, Jesse.
Thank you.
We did, on the budget side of things, initially we were at $65,000. When we went through and got to this point where we're at in the drawings and got everything down to square one, we did find a few things that were missing in the initial estimate plus some of the input that we got from the stakeholders. So, you do see a pretty significant bump in the price, up to $112,000 from originally. We had 65. There was quite a bit of pavement that didn't make the original estimate that will need to be taken care of, you know, to satisfy some of the downtown rules as well as, you know, we had a couple of the parking spots where we didn't have that square foot area called out in the original estimate, so. So, that unfortunately did go up. We're going to try to do what we can there and maybe use some ADA funds that we have to maybe offset this hit to the budget, but it is going to be over that 65,000. Tentative schedule is receive bids mid-September, start construction early to mid-October, and then finish before the end of the year.
How much of that do you think we'll be able to recoup with the ADA funds?
ADA, probably in the neighborhood of 15,000 to 20,000.
Those are still funds that we have. We just have a separate account that we have set aside, road use tax funds to do the ADA ramps as we do projects. So, it's not like we're avoiding costs. It's just like where, how are you, which potter you pull in to pay out of. The remainder of it, I think, is being paid for with a transfer from road use tax, going back on my memory, but I haven't looked at that since budget time. We have adequate funds in the road use tax fund to deal with the higher amount as it is.
You guys good?
Needs to be done, so, yeah.
Be a nice improvement, actually.
Okay. You good? All right. Jesse, thank you. Next is number seven, resolution awarding contract for the 2017 flow metering project.
So, we've touched on this before, but I'll go ahead and give you a quick overview. Basically, we were procuring flow meters so we could support our master plans, support future storm water monitoring, and just flow monitoring all around. We don't have really good data on pipe capacity, you know, additional flow we can add, things of that nature, so that's what this is going towards. And as I mentioned, it's going to be a pretty key component in our master planning as far as which areas of town we can expand easily now versus which areas we're going to have to upsize pipe, things like that. So, we're procuring several of the non-contact flow meters like you see in the bottom right, and then some submersible ones. These basically are a lot more safe and easy to remove and reinstall if you ever need to versus the traditional flow monitors that you have to climb clear down in the manhole.
Are we, we're purchasing these flow meters so that
Correct.
and we can reuse these, I mean, down the road?
Yep, we can reuse them. We can move them all over. Plan with the master plan is to move them all over town, so once we find, you know, areas where we have a lot of wet weather flow, you know, we can chase those up the system so we can pinpoint where we're doing our future improvements as far as lining, sewer replacement, things of that nature, so. And we'll have good flow information, so like I said, when we look at areas of town to expand in, we'll have that as well. Any other questions on this before I go to bid results? The budget for this was $150,000. We received two bids. One was $118,118, and the other was $165,930. We're recommending that we award to HAWK the lower amount, and we expect to, rather than construction start, we expect to receive these in five to 10 weeks, so, early to late September.
Questions?
Looks good.
All right.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks.
Number eight, resolution approving contribution to Dankworth Park Pool Dome Project.
This is tied to the lease agreement. That was previously at council meeting with the dome project. They are looking to apply for a grant in the near future, and part of that is looking at local contribution. All this little contribution listed in here is currently, I guess, $25,000 is within our budget. It's in the CIP for a pump improvement in FY18. That's something we delay until spring to make those improvements so that it could count towards their project. And the $45,000 listed is, I guess, essentially a refund or payback of the lease payments collected between September 18th and April, September of 2018 and April of 2020, although it's not listed as a payback, so that it counts as part of their grant.
What happens, we had this listed originally as a project to do in 2021? 2020?
Currently, we have a pool concrete deck replacement in FY22 for $100,000. They are doing that deck replacement as part of their project to install the dome and have asked that we pay them upfront some of that cost in lieu of us having that in our CIP.
So, our CIP had us contributing later on, so we don't have the funds, I mean, that's coming from Hotel Motel.
Yeah.
This will have to accommodate in a different format. The amount that we selected here for our contribution, we're working out with them, matches their lease payments for the first two years.
Yeah.
So, even though we didn't have it identified as a source of funds in these earlier years, we do essentially have a new source of funds that we wouldn't have otherwise been receiving.
So, $45,000 matches their payment over that time period. John's here recognizing the cost of it, whether that's sufficient or not, or if it needs to be a different amount. John, talk on that.
Mr. Freely?
This two-year timeframe was put in here initially based on the initial conversations with the lease agreement that we'd forego that payment for the first two years, have a lower amount. That wouldn't qualify for the grant application for a contribution.
Right.
So, this is a direct payment, essentially taking those funds, but.
Hello?
Mr. Freely?
Questions?
I think is the main thing, your overall project scope that you're looking at doing and how this fits in within that.
Yeah, we will be replacing the entire deck, which we've been getting some pricing. It will be right up close to that $100,000 that was budgeted initially. What we'd like to see is if we get the 22.5 for three years, that reimburses, which would be 67.5 all told, but it's still substantially less than the 100 that was, I mean, I understand it's different years, but it is still substantially less than the initial budget amount, which would work, I mean, that would help us out with the project overall, so.
Would you be okay with that coming in over a course of three years?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. We're working with, we've got that part worked out, so, yeah, that would be great.
Is this a Vision Iowa thing you're going after?
It's the CAT grant, which is administered by Vision Iowa, but it's not the, apparently the project, the grant that was, Bee's Park or whatever it was, not so at all.
Well, the programs have been modified over the years.
Yeah.
Right. Since I've been on it, I'm sure they have.
Yeah.
Everybody's good?
See, he'll be modifying the term in there to, instead of 45.
Change it to three years and have that matching that lease period to 2021.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freely.
That's one thing we talked about with the grant application, would need approval from the council for that grant application as well, so.
Yes, we intend to send that in about October 1st, so we'd like to have that done in the middle of September, so there's some time in between to approve the actual, we can show you the actual grant application.
Yeah, that's good. Sounds good. Okay, thanks for all your work, John.
Okay, so the consent, to the proposed consent agenda. Number one is resolution approving demolition nuisance payments for various properties. Are we good? Number two is.
Yeah, but I, every month, I look at that every time, and I look at the out-of-state owners.
Number two, resolution approving the application for the purpose of receiving benefits from the state revolving fund water resource restoration sponsored project. Jesse?
So, as you guys know, we are faced in the next couple of years with eliminating a lot of our CSOs. As part of that process, we are pursuing state revolving fund loans, and as part of that program, we can get this grant, basically, which allows us for up to 10% of the overall project in loan forgiveness by installing green infrastructure for different storm water improvements. Down at the bottom of this, you can see there's a couple of things that the green projects kind of entail. They're kind of different than your normal get the water to the pipe and then get it to the river type of effect where you're using plants and retention and infiltration to clean that water before it goes directly to the river, so. Next slide. Here's the two main projects. There's six or seven projects that I think Nick has a slide of that might be worth showing right now, but the two main ones are a permeable pavement on the south side of Grimes School, elementary school, and then a bio-retention filter on the north side. Those are the two biggest ones that we're really going for the most. I want to say the price tag, well, we'll get to that, but go ahead and show the rest.
Switch to the overhead, Stephanie.
Yeah, switch there. So, these are the different project locations that we were looking at green infrastructure for that are going ahead in the application. Like I said, you have the two sites at Grimes, and then there were various spots in the Locust Sub Basin where we were doing underground storage and filtration. It's kind of hard to see, but there were some intersections there where we were going to put underground storage at the intersections, do some upgrades, manholes, and things of that nature, so. Basically, the water goes into this filter first, and then any overflows go back into the storm system.
Show that bottom picture in the center, kind of shows kind of what bio-retention is.
Yeah.
Do you want to submit on that?
So, that's what a parking lot bio-retention, bio-filter, retention filter would look like there. Basically, like I said, you'd cut the curb out, water would go in there, pool in there for up to 24 hours, but if it ever gets to the point where it overwhelms your bio-retention filter, it goes over into an overflow and then back into the storm system. The benefit of these is all the chemicals and things that run off a regular parking lot get trapped in the soil. There's chemical processes in the soil that actually will clean that up, and you keep using that filter over and over as kind of a filter for different potential contaminants where you wouldn't have that in a traditional storm sewer.
The state-sponsored projects, as he has mentioned, and the 10% funds that get put in, the state essentially bless you, provides you funds to do towards a project such as this. It doesn't, it's not part of your loan balance
Right.
that you're paying back, so this is essentially given that you're already doing work, that you're doing a revolving loan fund. They provide a grant to do this type of project.
Right.
So, as HR Green has worked with our engineering staff and Public Works on the first phase of the Maslow project, this, they were tasked at the same time with looking at the dollar amount that would be available towards this sponsored project goal at this point, and looking at what potential projects could be done and what would get the most significant reduction in storm water runoff
Right.
for that dollar amount. As the projects were selected to be chosen, I think the ones that you chose were designed to be at the highest end
Right.
of your bang for the buck in terms of storm water runoff elimination.
Right. So, in addition to all the environmental things I was talking about, it does take some storm water out of the storm system to where you don't have that continuous flow at the highest rate like you would. The cost for all of the Locust projects, as you see here, is $619,000. The two at Grimes School, I think, were around 300?
Would be about 300,000. And in the end, you get 10% of your total loan amount, of which we will wrap our, the total construction loan, the actual construction loan, and it's honing in pretty close around that four and a half, that four and a half million
Yeah.
for Locust separation, so we won't be able to accomplish the full SRF, the sponsored project grant amount, just we don't have enough money to be able to cover all of those. But likely, the two Grimes School projects look like they're good candidates. There's an education aspect, then we've, in the application, which I didn't put in your pack, it was like 110 pages, there's a letter there from Pat Cohen, as we will work out some sort of a maintenance agreement should that ever happen, but they are supportive of this type of project, not because it's just the aesthetic value, but also the educational value that they can, you know, show the kids and teach the kids about the value of what this bio swale and permeable pavement would bring, so.
And then just to reemphasize, as part of the loan forgiveness, all the costs for these sponsored projects would be covered through the loan forgiveness, so it would have zero impact on the budget.
Thanks for bringing that up, too.
Big project.
Counsel? All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Jesse. Yeah. Thank you, Nick.
Number three, resolution approving the acceptance of a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, SAFER grant, number EMW 216 FH 00382. Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got in telling Jim this morning, I didn't have a PowerPoint, but I put one together after that, just so you have something to look at besides me. So, a little background on the SAFER grant. I think in your paperwork that I, the memo I have, that I have, actually I have a typo I put in there, was approved in February, it's actually approved in January, on January 16th. That was the, for me to apply for the SAFER grant, and that was for six firefighters. And I know we had a big discussion at the time about the cost and why we were asking for six and not three, but just to reiterate that, it was six firefighters, and the way the SAFER grant works now is they pay 75% of the cost of wages and benefits for the first two years, and then on the third year, they pay 35%, leaving the city with the remainder on those years, so. At that time, that was the grant that I put in. Those were the cost estimates right there. The three years we had estimated was about $631,000. That was before we went through the budget process, and during the budget, you approved the one additional firefighter. We did not hire, we were holding off on that, waiting to hear back on the SAFER grant. So, when we see the budget numbers at the end, those are taking that into consideration, that budgeted person that we have not hired. July 28th, we were awarded the SAFER grant, and the dollar amount they figured was $1,000,2174. At the time, when we talked about the six firefighter grant, or the six firefighters, why were we asking for that? I went through a whole list of things. I'll kind of touch on some of those again. Couple of bigger points were, that would get us back about to the staffing level where we were 20 years ago, when we did about half the number of calls, and probably repeating things we've talked about here, but I think that's an important thing. And again, the call volume in emergency services, while it's good to keep our skills sharp and to bring in some extra revenue when you're in emergency services, only so much you can, how many calls you can take where you start actually putting your community at risk, risk that we're not going to be able to respond to the calls, risk to the employees, more injuries, that sort of thing. So, the justification for the grant, the main thing that SAFER looked at was the 1710 standard NFPA. It deals with response times and response, you know, how many people you have responding to a call, so that was the main focus of the grant because that's the question that you had to. to answer. Where are you at now in relation to 1710 and where will you be if we grant you a SAFER grant? So, we're right below the number of firefighters, again, that's 15 on a regular structure fire, they want you to respond with 15 firefighters in nine minutes or less. So, on a normal day, we have about 10 people on duty in Burlington and then we have four on a good day coming from West Burlington. So, even on paper, if everybody was available, nobody was on a call, we only respond with 14. So, rarely do we meet the 15 on scene within nine-minute response time. With the two additional, that gets us right at the 15, at least on paper. Again, I have to consider the number of calls we go on per day. Right now, we're averaging between 14 and 15. Some days, it's upwards of 20 or over 20 calls. So, chances are, somebody's out on a call, you don't necessarily get the whole 15 to The next one is the OSHA two-in and two-out rule, Earl was asking about that. So, outside of a rescue scenario where you're having to save somebody in a fire, we have to have four people on scene in order to go into a house, in, in order to attack a fire from interior. So, it's important that we have four people on scene and the way we do that now is we normally have two people on an engine and two on an ambulance. So we need the ambulants to go with the engine on all the fire calls. And I'll talk about that here in a second, but they need to be in the same area of town and respond and get there about the same time. So, the next one there is the third staffed ambulance, and if you ask any of our guys, probably they'll say that's the number one thing that we really need. Mostly our ambulance calls are about 75% of our-
Please do your-
-call volume. I'll show you a map here in a minute of where our calls are at, but most of them are north of our dividing line of Station One and Station Two. So, we have a strategic location for our third ambulance that takes a lot of the call volume off of the central, the ambulance stationed at Central Station. Right now, and in there, I think I wrote 40 times per, per month, Station Two covers Station One territory. So, they come up from Summer Street Station and they go somewhere into downtown or out of Sunnyside or Lenox Park or maybe West Burlington. All this to the north of about West Avenue is what we call Station One's territory. So, that ambulance has to respond from out at the airport up on this side of town. And that happens on average about twice per day. Several times already today that's happened. And so when I report our response times every month and I say, you know, this is, I don't factor out any of those long times, so that does increase our average response time because coming from Summer Street to say Lenox Park or West Burlington, those are going to be some longer response times for us.
So, did, I maybe was tuned out for just a second, but when you're talking about a third ambulance, are you talking about a mobile somewhere away from the fire station parked and waiting for a call?
Yes. So, this last spring, when we, when we had the staffing available, if we had any, any number above 10, so if we had 11 people working, we staffed a third ambulance in daytime hours until about 9:00 PM, they were stationed in West Burlington. That was a, that, well, I can click ahead and I can click back. So you can see, that's West Burlington Fire Station right there. So, this was the territory we outlined for them. So they got about a third of the calls, which then helped the Central Street, or the Central Station Ambulance not have to run out to all those calls. So it really evens out the call line when we can do it.
And West Burlington, so you're, you're going to keep him posted up at West Burlington Fire Department?
During the day. Right now, we're working, actually working with Public Works to find a nighttime spot for them, because their station isn't set up for sleeping quarters or staying there 24/7. They just don't have the facilities for that. So, working with Nick, hopefully we can come to some agreement there where we can put the ambulance in there probably after 5:00 at night. And that's still, you know, on this map, we're, it'd be somewhere, is that West Burlington Avenue? Somewhere in here. It's still a very good location strategically for us. A lot of these, a lot of our calls are actually right here off West Avenue, Sunny Brook, Rosebush, all of those, the assisted living facilities, nursing home, those account for a lot of our calls. And that, and West Burlington, about 40 calls per month. From Public Works, those will be much closer. So, that's still a good spot. Also keeps the other ambulances in their stations and able to run with their engines more often, so for the two-out, two-in and two-out rule. Make sure I touched everything on the third out ambulance here. Yeah. And then the last one there is overtime savings, and in the grant application, they even ask you, are you planning on seeing some overtime savings with the grant? And yes, we are, and it's not the primary reason that we would, we pursued the SAFER grant, but it is a big reason. And asking for six versus three really makes the overtime savings a possibility. So, what we're looking at is adding two firefighters per shift and increasing our daily staffing only by one, so up to 11 on a normal basis. That allows for somebody to be, get injured, somebody to get, be sick and not have overtime every time that person's off. So, that's really what drives our overtime now, is anytime you have a long-term injury, even for a month, every time that person is supposed to work, now you're paying an overtime shift. So, that gives us the one person cushion in there. So that, our budget overtime this year is 150,000. We should at least see about a half of that reduced, so about a $75,000 savings in the overtime budget.
I've got to ask you this, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, can we get a SAFER grant at three men?
I can't amend the SAFER grant now, no.
Okay.
What'd you ask? I didn't hear you ask.
I needed to ask him if there was, from, from questions, but if there was, if there was any way that if we couldn't do the six, that we could apply for the three.
When I, when I, when I brought it up the first time, the big thing was, like I said, they're asking about 1710 and we're talking about 1710. Just adding one person doesn't always get us to where we need to be to meet 1710. So.
Thank you.
And, and again, the overtime savings wouldn't be there, and you wouldn't be able to staff a third out ambulance a lot of the day, so. I'm sorry, Jim, did I interrupt?
I was essentially going to say the 1710.
Okay. Again, so that's the map, that, the, the pink line or red line that I drew on there, that's our dividing line for the two stations, that'd be Station Two, Central Station, that's West Burlington. And we've, we've, that's not our territory map, but we do have a territory map divided up for the, when we, we call it the third station or Station Three, West Burlington. So, when we do man the third station, we have set territories. Divides the town up really, really good for our purposes. That's a, a representation of all the calls since July 1st from our reporting system, not including all the, the county calls or in Illinois.
Wow.
That's, all the blue dots are-
That's amazing. Isn't that something? But these are not all ambulance calls, there's some-
No, those are all types of calls.
Types of party.
But most of them are ambulance.
Yeah. Austin from GIS drew, got that going for me today, so I thank him for that. He does a great job on that kind of stuff.
That's cool.
So these are probably more accurate than the numbers I gave you. Stephanie got these together for me this week. So moving ahead in FY 18, if we, if I would accept the SAFER grant, I have to get in there and accept it yet. We hired the six firefighters and got them on board, it's going to take a month or so, we have to do background checks, physicals, get their gear lined up. So we're talking about sometime in October. And as soon as you hire the first guy, then that starts your three-year period, or gal. So, we'll hire all six to start within a day or two so we can do their initial training all together. So if we do that sometime in mid-October, for the remaining of this fiscal year, the difference in our budget will basically be zero. I think Stephanie maybe had a little bit of savings to our overall budget. That's because we didn't hire the one person that's already in our budget. So that, that salary amount would cover the additional costs. FY 19, again, that same person takes off, I think I had rec, I had estimated 135,000 per year and take off the salary of this person that we have in the budget, and that's how Stephanie came up with the 46,900 for fiscal year 19. FY 20, that's when the city has to pick up 65% of the costs of salaries and benefits for six people, and that's where the 219 comes from. FY 21, the grant will end October, whatever, whenever we hire these people this year, then three years from now, the grant's over, they no longer pay anything. So for most of that year, October through July 1st, that, that whole cost is on the city and that's why it jumped so high in year three, or FY 21. And then in '22, that's the total cost of six, actually, that's the total cost of five with no grant money. The one's already in the budget. Some things are not included in there, there's no, the overtime savings is not included in that amount.
So, if I understand that right then, Chief, then by, the $75,000 would cover FY 19?
No, we're still going to, we'll still owe the, the 46,000 additional.
What, what you're saying, the question, if the savings and over, overtime usage could potentially offset that 46,000 for that year, yes?
The answer is yes. Yes.
Okay.
So the only kind, the rule.
And follow-up thoughts then?
Yeah, please.
Going forward, then it would be more than 75 for the next year, you'd probably save? Would that be a true statement?
The overtime savings, it would be about the same. You would always save about half of what we're budgeted now. It's hard, it's, it's hard to say. Based on past experience, the last time we had a SAFER grant, we increased three, but didn't up our minimum staffing, we were around 56,000 in fire overtime. So, I'm guessing, I'm estimating 75,000.
So, in '20, then we're talking about 135, 140,000 then, right?
Taking off the 75,000, yes.
You know what, I don't follow you on that.
But then we're still talking 400 and 221 and then, and then, you know.
450.
Minus the 75. So was it, did you have a thought? I'm just talking out loud here.
I, I'm thinking out loud, but I, my, my concern is that when it's all in our lap and what's going to be expected from the city. And, you know, it's a concern for the city, I mean, it's not a personal concern, I've only got two years left, bro, but again, it's a, well, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a concern and I'm, I'm just wondering, how's that going to play out? If the, if the backfill, if they, if they hammer us on that, I'm just saying, how's that going to play out? Because is there a chance to re-up for, for the SAFER and, and what's, is there a timeframe?
I would say re-upping for the SAFER is a, it was an outside chance this time. I would say a third SAFER grant would be like, they're going to say, you haven't absorbed the cost now, we're not, they're, they're, they do this hoping that eventually you're going to, the city would do it themselves. I don't think, I don't know if I've ever heard of a city getting a third SAFER grant. A second was not, like, just a handful that I ever seen get a second one. Worst, worst case, in my opinion, for the SAFER grant is that your FY 21, October 1st or whatever the date is, and the grant's over, the six lowest people on seniority, you know, are gone. Or the last SAFER grant, we did it through attrition, and it's, it's hard to say, I can't say three years out, but every year, there's people leaving the fire department. We have a lot of people that are eligible, even more will be eligible to retire, you know, come 2020. Not that I'm offering that up, I'm just saying, if, if what you're saying would come true and there's like, hey, we, you know, but to, the SAFER grant, you are committed through 20, if I accept it, we're committed through 2020, whatever the date is that we start the grant. If at any point during there you let your, you don't hire back and keep the minimum, the, it'd be 39 plus the six, so 45 firefighters, if you drop below that, then you forfeit whatever they paid and you have to pay them back.
Oh, you do forfeit, okay.
Yeah. In year two, you say, no, we don't want this anymore, then you pay back your ones. That's what they say. I don't, I'd have to, I'm sure cities have done it, I'll see if they actually stand by it, I assume they do.
Is hiring six additional firefighters, that's not a challenge? I mean, there are people-
No, well, we, yeah, we, we just did the testing a couple of months ago, so we have a list of, we had 12, we hired one, we've got 11 left on the list. So there are challenges, like I said, background checks, physicals, the training, most everybody we hire will, they'll probably be a mix, maybe half and half paramedics, not paramedics, so that, we'll have to get them through that. They'll, they'll all, they're all firefighter trained already, so that decreases our training time on the front end. We don't have to run through firefighter one, firefighter two training, they come with that already. The gear, I guess I was going to talk about that a little bit, there are some additional costs, like the gear, the clothes, the physicals, all that does come with a cost. Most of that, we've already budgeted for gear, we haven't spent, obviously, we're just partly into this year, we haven't spent the turnout gear money, that will help, we have some other turnout gear that will probably take care of itself. We've saved back some other capital money thanks to West Burlington, they gave us some SCBA bottles when they got a grant and replaced all theirs, so that saved us from having to spend about, I think it was 7,800 that we had in our budget for that, that we could spend on equipment, so. All, no, the additional costs won't, aren't, aren't a huge factor, we can absorb those in our budget now.
Last time we went through this process, the SAFER grant allowed us at a time when we were, we were on a hiring freeze and had gone down significantly in staffing to bring back three of those positions for two, two-plus years. But at that point, we were on our five-year process of trying to eliminate deficits and we were very firm about, and the council was very firm about, we can't, we don't have funds identified to continue those positions once the grant funding ran out. And we had it built within our, all of our budgetary models to, as those positions went off of funding, to use the next three or, well, it was two retirements that were, the way the grant worked, just timing on positions to use the next two retirements to get back down to the staffing without the SAFER grant. But we were very clear about that on the front end and carried it through to the back end. You're asking about on the back end now with, when you're looking at what the full costs are on it, we've not been consistent about saying what we're doing with those positions on the back end outside of kind of a, I'd have to say, the budget process, you're kind of, you wanted to see the six positions funded if possible, but there were no statements that were saying that we're firm, that we're going to find the funding or, nor did, were you in a position where you're saying, once the funding was out, if we go after the grant, are you going to eliminate them? You kind of need to have, at least on a preliminary perspective, what are you trying, hoping to achieve on the back end, but it, recognizing the fact that it's going to be a different council seated at the point where those decisions are made.
That's the point, yeah, you're going to have different people setting up here. Maybe not, maybe, maybe I'll be here, but-
Yeah, but I still think it's good that, I mean, I want to be honest with you, I, I feel with, with about this SAFER grant, the way that we did with the last one, looking at, with the information that I have right now, that, that way I would, that's where I would want to move forward with it. But again, this is just the work session. And speaking of that, before I forget, I need to have this moved from consent to regular agenda, too.
Yeah, me too. I was going to bring that up.
Yeah. And I talked about, you know, get to the end of the grant, get rid of, you know, get rid of, that sounds a terrible way to say it, but-
Yeah.
-you know, all six, well, there's a middle ground, we're already, we already budgeted for the one.
Right.
We could just budget for two more and then have three, and then, as long as we have a staffing level of 11, we could still keep the third ambulance staff 24/7, 36/7, which is a great improvement from where we are now.
Yeah, that's-
You know, but like I keep saying, we're, in 2017, at the end, I think we're going to say, in a 20-year time, we have doubled our calls. We didn't quite do it last year, but in a 20-year period, we're going to reach it this year. Last, the last three months, we were at 440 calls, 445, 455 in July, which is an all-time record for our department. And I just don't see that number going, I mean, I, there's no reason to expect that that's going to go down. So when you're talking three years from now, I don't know where that number's, that number's at per month, where it's even more critical to have the third ambulance staff.
And you bringing that up, that's a good point, because there's no telling where we'll be three years from now, and, you know, we, we may be, the community may be saying, hey, we, we need five more, you know, something, so, you know, there's no telling how that's going to work out, but, boy, I'll tell you, that's, it's going to be tough just to hang on to the, you know, looking at the three, that's going to be easier, but hanging on to those six, and to me, that just blows me away that this was the staff that we had in the 80s or, what'd you say, 20 years ago?
Yeah, 20 years ago.
Right. Let me read this sentence to you. Six additional firefighters will bring staffing levels back to where they were 20 years ago when we had about half of the current call volume. 1997 was 25 calls versus 2016, which was 4,800 calls.
Silver tsunami's real, my friend.
I mean, if that doesn't blow you away and make you want to get behind trying to figure out how we can keep six additional firefighters past the SAFER grant, I don't know what will.
The bigger question now is, do we authorize him to say yes, take it?
I don't see-
In my opinion, since we authorized him to apply for it, we implicitly said, we're going to take it, you know? So the question is, can you find, in fiscal year, fiscal year 20, can you find $130,000 and you don't, you can't say that? say that, except you, you gotta say, tie it into something else we're gonna talk about later and say, well, if we're gonna save a couple hundred thousand dollars here. But then on alternative, like you said, with the, the backfill going away, then that, that also.
It's gonna change things.
Throws a wrench into the situation. But if, in my opinion, we authorize him to file the application, so how can we not turn on and say, no? I just, I think we should've thought that through. In my view, we did, so. I, I think we, we do it and we find a way to pay for it. And if that means, at the end of three years, reducing something, then that, fine, let's do it. But public safety is our number one goal here, so.
That's a fact, my friend. That's a fact.
I feel that way, too. The fact that we should go ahead with the grant, to back off now is really.
I, I would just say, I think you probably hear from different people than I do on a regular basis. But since we got the grant, so many people came up to me, said, this is a great, of course, they're probably not taking long-term implications, but they're all very positive comments about the grant, so.
Ju- just for the record, there's no doubt from, I don't think anybody in the council, and definitely from me, that you guys don't need the staff. That's not the issue. So I, I just wanna, wanna put that to bed. It's not like you guys are trying to come in and weasel in extra staff so people can take naps. We understand that you, that you need the help, so. Thank you. You guys got anything else?
That's all from me. We're, we're moving to regular agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just gonna bring up this in the packet, showing that to fund these additional by here, what property tax increase would take.
I was looking at.
So, just so anybody else would wanna see that.
And this is all assuming we can't find cuts someplace else.
Right, exactly. Just to give you a ballpark, year by year, what it would take to fund these.
Keep an eye, Jim.
Well, you could just put this up on the overhead. Except I wrote on mine.
It's got written on there.
Stephanie Stoker.
Okay. Seventy-four cents, but it sounds so little when you say it like that, but I know that's a big, big drop in property tax.
Looking at the seventeen, once you break the seventeen number, now you're thinking, whoa.
Yeah. And again, this is without any reduction in the overtime costs. This is straight, just by using those numbers.
Another, another factor is, is Stephanie put together the cost for this. I think you did family insurance?
Yes, yes.
So, family insurance is nine thousand a year more than single?
Right.
And you don't, until you hire six positions, you don't know which they're gonna take.
Right.
But if, if, if three of them are taking the single insurance instead of family, your costs are twenty-seven, thirty thousand less a year.
Yeah. And then, then like cert pay, like Matt said, when he hires them, he's probably not gonna be able to hire all paramedics. So I, I budgeted the higher dollar amount for the paramedics, just, so. There'll be fluctuation as we move through the budget, where, you know, maybe those numbers won't be as high as, as they are in, in three years, so.
Still good. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's nothing small about city government, my friend. Chief, you good?
I'm good.
You guys good?
Yeah, I am.
We appreciate you and your staff. We really do. Okay. Number four's resolution approving inter-local agreement between the City of Burlington and Des Moines County for the two thousand and seventeen Bernie Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program Award. Chief?
No, there won't be any future commitments to this. This is our, our local grant. Normally, we get this application in April or May. It's, it's been postponed. I don't know if funding wasn't available or what happened with that. But I just got this email last Tuesday that funding's been approved, and we've been approved for nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yes.
And we have to share some of that with the county. They're a disparate agency, but they do help us prosecute crimes and put people in jail and keep people in jail, so.
Yes.
So we need to get this agreement in place to get the grant. There's no match money to the grant. This is, this nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. And this year, we've, Chief Deputy White and I decided that we wanted to apply for some ballistic blankets. They're two foot by four foot, they're portable, that the guys can roll up and have them right in the car with them. So when they respond to some of these real critical incidents we've had, they can unroll that shield, put it together, or simply fold it out and put it over the door. So like, when officers on are just very recently on Central Street, it would've been just perfect for that situation. Roll up there, open up your driver's side door, roll the blanket out, and now you've got some ballistic protection for the lower half of your body, if you're gonna use your car for cover. So there's all different kinds of things that we could use these for. And I can't think of a better time or a better way to try to spend this money. So that's kinda where we're gonna, that's what we're gonna apply for. And whether we get it or not, it's another thing. But we gotta have this agreement to even, to begin to apply for the grant, so.
Okay. Let's try to keep our, our crew protected the best we can, so.
How many would these?
I think we could do nineteen total or close, eighteen or nineteen. I mean, we're still getting bids right now, but they're, they're probably gonna be around that, a thousand to twelve hundred dollars, so. But that would take care of the fourteen marked cars that we have. The county already has a few, so it'll start to supplement what they're trying to do. So, I mean, it'd still leave our unmarked cars unprotected. But over the course of time, you know, we can think about some type of capital, too. I mean, it's not a huge expense, especially if we can get fourteen of them knocked out, so.
You guys good?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Number five is resolution approving lease agreement between the Steamboat Senior Citizen, Inc., Senior Citizen, Senior Center, Inc., and the City of Burlington for lease of city-owned building located at five oh one Jefferson Street.
So they're, they're on a three-year lease, so this was just up to be reviewed. We actually sent it to our attorney, so it became, our one-page lease became seven, eight pages now. But technically.
You like that?
Yeah. There wasn't that many changes. The Senior Center president and they've reviewed it, they're fine with it. So basically, it's just up for your approval now.
You guys got any problems with that?
Remember you had me sitting in on their monthly meetings, I remember.
All right, good. I got three more years of dances then. Excellent. Okay, we've got a public hearing set for September fifth. First is a consideration of an ordinance amending section one thirty-five eleven driveway culverts at chapter one thirty-five streets and sidewalks of the Burlington Municipal Code. And B is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and seventeen Vineyard Street area drainage project. So, yeah, some fun with that. We've got some present, we have a presentation tonight. Your numbers up? Bruce Workman.
I'm not Bruce Workman, but he will be up here a second. I just wanna introduce Bruce. When we started this program, Bruce volunteered to, to run it. He's done a great job with it, so I'd like to thank him for organizing it, and then thank the firefighters for going out and taking care of it. As Bruce will explain, it was a lot of work to visit every single address or every residence, place of business in Burlington. That's, it was quite an undertaking. He did a good job with that. So thank you, Bruce, and thanks to the firefighters that did that.
Awesome.
And then Bruce is gonna touch on one other thing at the end, if you don't mind, something that was in our budget, that was approved, but we're moving forward on it, so.
What this project was, was an effort to get buildings and houses that don't currently display address numbers to simply put numbers up. Hence the program name, Your Numbers Up. And I included the door knocker, the door hanger that we put on the houses that we found that did not have numbers. There's eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-four addressable buildings in the city. That number I got from our buddy Austin up at GIS. He developed us a grid map. We broke the city down into fifty-seven sections, and we just plucked away at it and throw every street and identified out-of-compliance addresses. So the first pass, we go through, put a door knocker on there, ask them to, remind them that it's gonna help you if you need a call for ambulance or fire truck or police officer, to have your address up. So there was, there was a little bit of debate about, how do we go about this? This city code specifically says you must have four-inch numbers. And some houses have it written out, other houses might have three-inch numbers. We were worried about, can we find your house if we go to your house? So that was our, our threshold. And so as, as it panned out, there was over five hundred addresses that did not have numbers up. Now, I would tell you, a lot of these addresses are in the downtown area, a lot of businesses were out of compliance. There's, and then churches don't think they need to put up numbers. We're supposed, we're supposed to go to like, the Church of Christ, okay, which church of Christ? And so they all got visited. And so after thirty days went by, and it, and we started this in November, so we put the numbers up, and we really didn't, or the, the door hangers up, we really didn't revisit them until come springtime. We gave them more than thirty days. So about fifty percent complied and fifty percent just haven't done anything. So if for an enforcement issue, that's really going over to our community development department, which Eric has this information as well. And so it was a pretty successful program, getting fifty, fifty-two percent to comply with this. And, you know, in the end is, if you call for an emergency service, we'll be able to, we'll be able to get to your house. And that, that's, that's was our goal, to be productive in that respect. On the non-compliant addresses, just interestingly enough, it's, we started numbering the grid from the north part of town with a one and a fifty-seven down at the bottom part of town. So these are actually geographically north to south in, in line. Yeah, so the guys at work diligently went about this and, and, and helped with this product. Product, this was, this was a group effort by everybody down at the fire department. And yeah, it is frustrating when we get a call and we, we got an address, but we, you know, we, it's difficult to find. So right now, there's, the compliance rate is almost ninety-eight percent, which is pretty respectable, but room for improvement. Any questions for me and the fire chief?
There are questions, but you're a rock star and everybody that was in, involved with that.
Yeah, the, the guys did, and gals did the, all the footwork on this.
Awesome.
And the GIS, Des Moines GIS.
That's working out pretty good.
Yeah, they're, they're very helpful. Now, the other item I had, Eric, if you could put up my FY eighteen capital item, this is just an update on a, a command card that's been ordered, it's in the FY eighteen capital budget. We have saved some money by reusing items, equipment in the current car and, and placing them on a new car. So the, with this, we went through one, the car dealer, Carl Chevrolet in Ankeny, they have the state bid for the, the vehicle itself, so we didn't have to bid that because they're the only one that could bid that. The retail price of the car is fifty thousand dollars with all discounts, and the options that we took off that, it nets down to about thirty-four thousand.
Yes.
Now, with that, we still have to put lights, sirens, radios in there. And there's a separate bid for that. And we're refashioning, like, we, we're gonna put the current light bar on this car, and also that slide-out tray, the command post that goes in the back, that's gonna save us almost seven thousand dollars for just that, and another two thousand dollars for the light bars. We're reusing items there. And then we're refashioning, like, we have file cabinets in the back. We're all digital now. So we're fashioning the slide-out, the slide-out tool trays for the breathing apparatus and tools, stuff that we use a lot, and, and'll make use of. Actually, make the car safer, because we're gonna put that stuff behind the cage and it won't come flying forward.
Good idea.
So that's, so that's the update on this car that we should see it end of September or something like that.
Well, good deal. And good deal on getting the savings. Awesome.
Yeah, that, that worked out well. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you.
Chief, while you're there, do you wanna say something about what's happening Wednesday morning at your fire station?
Oh, sure. So we've been doing this tactical fitness program with the hospital for going on a year and a half now. And then they did a little kickoff in the spring, where they got a bunch more people to, to start working on. They did a bunch of testing, like, body, like, measured us all different ways. And then they had us do some fitness things, you know, planks. I don't know, they have a, anyway, they have a fitness test. A lot of us did the fitness test, and we did some other stuff where you had to go to the hospital. And then they let you work out for twelve weeks, and they retested everybody. And then Wednesday, they're gonna give out some awards to some of the people that came out of the twelve weeks, really improved. So it's pretty dramatic. Some guys did, have done a really great job with it. The hospital's been awesome with that, so.
Yeah. Good.
So that's Wednesday morning at eight fifteen. That's our normal workout time. There'll be some of the trainers from the hospital there and some other.
I'm gonna go and bring my Bengay with me, so.
I was gonna ask, are you, you gonna ask them to work out, too?
Yeah, Jim, did you have, bring your shorts and t-shirt. It's awesome.
It's, it's.
What, Jim? What, what is it, Jim? Tell us.
I was sore.
I had to pass up on the workout today, 'cause I was too sore from Friday, so.
I'll bring my.
I'll, I'll bring Davidson with me. We'll show you guys what's going on.
Have an ambulance nearby. Well, it's important.
Thanks, counselor. Hey, we're, we're getting six more in, you know, so.
I had a question on the numbering. The, the, this was brought up as a, an issue from, from the council, as a concern for something to get addressed. And you've got a little over fifty percent compliance on it, and there's still half of them out there that didn't comply. And I guess the question, is that something where the council is satisfied with where we're, where we're at on that? Or were you wanting more, to be more aggressive, which is not the fun part of things, if you, to be more aggressive on enforcement of that?
That's a serious matter, though, I think. I mean.
I'd, I'd like to have a little time to digest that. But I mean, all the work that they put in to get, to get up to this point of compliance, and it is important, people, I, I sure would like for, for everybody to see how important that is.
And I think that is, is, is that through your department, if anything was gonna be done, Eric? Or is that, where would that?
Well, yeah, it'd be something we'd have to look at, to see how it would fit within our schedule. And it's not something we have time to do five hundred in the next month or two.
It's only two fifty.
Yeah. Two fifty.
I would assume some of them, since, even since we rechecked, have went ahead and got their numbers.
I would think so, too. But it, it is just a question how, how you want us to proceed with that.
I know I ran into, well, I didn't run into, but I had a couple comments, not directly, but I, I'd read some more, like on Facebook probably, where there were some elderly people who weren't able to do, you know, to put new numbers on or make them more visible. So I don't, and I don't know how many of these would even be residential, and how many of these would even be people who would need assistance. So I don't know how many of those would be those kind of situations.
We didn't put it out there or put it on the tags, but we did have some phone calls. I know, actually, Tim took care of at least one, if not two of them. And then, trying to think of the people, how people like weather, why, weatherizing.
Community action?
Community action, yes. They volunteered. I know they put up some numbers as well. So people would call, say, I can't either physically or don't have the money to do it.
Yeah, I would hope, yeah, I would hope if, you know, if somebody saw one of these green tags, they would feel okay reaching out to people. But I know some people didn't, evidently, which is too bad. So I hope if there's still people who need it, hopefully they're listening, which, maybe they're not. Chances that there might not be.
I think moving forward, we just need to be mindful that, with, with everything that we do, we, we always go in knowing that there's gonna be some people that are going to need some type of.
Oh, yeah.
Of assistance or something. But, but again, I, I would like to have a hundred percent compliance. That's why we did kinda start this process, so.
Definitely. I don't know, I know it's definitely time-consuming, this kind of a process. And not saying you guys obviously have a lot of time to kill, but I know I don't necessarily wanna jump right in to, you know, making people pay fines for not complying to this, I guess. But I know it's something we definitely need to stay on top of. I don't wanna just put this now on the back burner kind of thing. They've done so much work.
If people, if people were to call you, could you refer them to some?
If people, if people were to call you, could you refer them to somebody?
Right. I still have the information from the gentleman at Community Action. He can do a limited number, but he did all that we asked, which I think was only a couple of people that called in.
So we could ask Mr. Rob Sussman to make a point of this on his, since a lot of people listen to your program?
Yeah, everybody listens to Sussman.
What about mailing to these people with that? Bring anything?
Part of what, if, if Eric's going to proceed with them, he won't, I assume your department, if you do, it'll be a few at a time as you go through the system. And you would be doing a, a letter notification at the process. I mean, that's what you have to do with any of your stuff to have any legal enforceability on it. So you would be provide, providing them some level of timeframe to get, get that accomplished?
Yeah. And if they wouldn't do it, if we handled that as a nuisance, we'd hire someone to go put letters on their house, I guess, as our nuisance process.
Eric, would you just like take a, come back to us with how you want to proceed with that and just, and just represent that to us on what we want to do? Give you, give you some time to figure out how you want to go through with that. And then we'll, we'll put some teeth on it when we get through. You guys satisfied with that?
I mean, yeah, I guess the next process would be something like just sending out, hey, you didn't do this kind of thing. But also then, I guess, you know, if, if you do that, I would like, you know, giving those people an option. If you need assistance, maybe giving them contact information. Would that be okay or not?
If, if they have questions, they can contact his office. If he's going to offer assistance some other way, he's going to find out that there's actually someone who's willing to do that.
Right. Well, I just didn't know, like.
As you've talked about, working with Community Action, that was something where they don't, I don't think they had a guarantee on.
Right.
I don't think they want to take on 250.
No, certainly not. Certainly not if it's, you know, like a business or something like that. But just sometimes people don't think about those things, unfortunately.
Maybe there's some service club in town that would be looking for a project to do.
I just don't think we've got to Community Action. I don't think we're going to need to do that many of them. I think most people are just being slow. But come back, come back to us on that with your suggestion, how you want to proceed. And we'll, we'll make sure we get that squared away. Again, Mr. Workman?
Thank you.
Tell, tell everybody phenomenal job. Awesome, awesome. We've got, our next discussion item is the Memorial Auditorium.
So we, this, this is a continuation from the last meeting. And we'd tentatively looked at this being a time where VenueWorks would have a chance to come and give a discussion. And that's no longer part of the, the process. The last work session, we identified several different options that you could, just general directions that you could look to go. It's still up for the council to determine which direction that they would be interested in proceeding on. In, in the meantime, Steph and Nick both had a discussion with Steamboat Days. Well, actually, we've had discussions with multiple groups in the last couple of weeks. But they would have, depending on what the council's desires are, they would have a willingness to have a discussion with how they could partner with, with what we're trying to accomplish down there. But it kind of depends on what you're wanting to see happen down at the auditorium.
See, I, okay, before we get into that, to me, I feel like moving forward with the auditorium, it's imperative. I think it's, it's at the top of the paramount list that, that we get some type of board in place that can oversee and, and, you know, people that are committed to the, to the Burlington Memorial Auditorium, people that care about Burlington, you know, people that are involved with what's going on in Burlington, that we get a, a board of people that can, that can make sure that they keep an eye on things and that we can, we can get this auditorium back running again. Because I personally, as far as the dollars, I don't want to see us going into those numbers that we were with, with VenueWorks. But if we could get them a little bit lower than where we were before, before we started this process, and still give the same service to our local acts and to the, to the civic music, to the people that normally use that, then, then I'm, I'm all in.
Let's review what we kicked around. I wasn't clear on those two options. I know one was to go through that.
In terms of the two options for us running the facility, one parameter would look at how do we try to staff this at a level that was comparable to what we were, not quite to the level, but comparable to the level that we staffed five, five years ago or so, where we have two maintenance positions or, can't think of what your, the position title is on those. And then we looked at someone who would be char, in charge of booking, scheduling, et cetera, for the facility itself.
And we've had that before.
And we've, we've been at that staffing level in the past. You'd also see with that staffing level of part-time, were you going to put that up?
Yes.
You'd have a level of part-times and temp staffing to assist with teardowns and, and setups for different events that occurred during the course of the year. The other op, main option that was put out there with us running it is if you're trying to, if you're, part of your goal is to significantly reduce costs there, to go into an arrangement where you're trying to maintain your existing events that are in there, the, the meetings that are occurring on a regular basis, the events, whether it's Snow Bowl or what, or what, that are consistently in there on an annual basis, make sure that you're able to meet their needs for having a facility that's functioning, but you're not really open for business essentially for trying to actively get other events scheduled during the course of the year. And.
So that difference then in dollars and cents?
You know, that, what was put in there.
Is 40,000.
You're seeing the net cost if we're going more of a staffing where we have the three full-time staff plus the other. That shows a net cost of about 395,000, actually a little bit more than a budgeted amount for VenueWorks. So they haven't hit that the last couple of years. It's actually a little bit cheaper than what we were netting out, but not significantly. Minimal staffing is that final column. I think that 110,000 is more aggressive than what we would actually get for, I think it'd cost us more than that. But you'd see a change there, potentially saving a couple of hundred thousand to move down. But you're not going to have the center that's actively being promoted. And you're, you're just going to, I think that you'd probably see those that are using the facility not necessarily completely happy with what they're, they're getting for a level of service either. And, and these are, to put out here as two kinds of, just two options for different types of philosophies. One's designed around trying to present, maybe not actively going out after the same types of events that VenueWorks was, but trying to actively use that facility. And the other's trying, is more after a cost-saving objective. The council has to decide why you want to do this or why you want this brought up. When this was originally asked to be brought up for the council, it was in the context of last budget cycle and, and how do we look at ways to cut costs?
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that's where you're at now as a group.
Well, we decided that closing it is out of the, is not an option.
It's not an option for me.
Not an option for me.
No, not at this time.
Okay. If we do the city minimum, does that mean people that want to have wedding receptions or class reunions or something down there, was that?
We're not trying to get that done.
Right.
And, I mean, we wouldn't have the staffing within that. Now, you could say you're willing to do that, but you're going, your costs are going to incrementally go up for each different types of event you put on there. This is designed with the idea that you're scaling back the utility costs by, when, when you're going for a week with no, or two with no events occurring in there, you let the temperature go to a more moderate temp, not as livable a temp. Well, you can't do that and then schedule a wedding to come in.
Right.
So.
But, but even in the minimal sense, things like civic music could operate in this, right?
Yep. And you would have the building come up temp to make sure that you address those needs. But again, you're still not going to.
The minimal one is, that's all that's covering, is the few acts here and there sporadic and the civic music, high school, all that action. That's, that's what the.
And that's all we've ever had. I mean, the idea of, should we go out and see if we can bring in more, when a professional company couldn't do it, I don't know why we think the city could.
I agree with you.
I mean, it's bringing these entertainment people in.
I still, I still think this is a big building. It's been around for a long time. And I still think we need, the bottom line is we've got to get a board that is committed to the, to the auditorium. You know, we just can't keep, you know.
What?
Trying to make a decision, you know, every so often because we see that, you know, it's, it's not working. I just think we're here to this point. We tried VenueWorks and that didn't work. And we, we do need to make a call. Are we going to do the basics and just realize what we've got? A building that's, it's old. You know, it's, it's, you know, you go to the mark and there's, there's no bad seed there. You know, you go here, I've heard somebody say, we went to a show and I couldn't see anything. You know, I, I don't know what to say to that. You know, it's just that, it still means a lot to a lot of the people in this community. And.
How many years VenueWorks has been in? Three?
Three and a half.
And before that, how many years were you still losing? 400,000?
Well, I mean, if you look at.
I thought it was 300.
The records that I have only go back to 2010, but they're, it's fairly consistent in that 300,000 to 400,000 range.
So we've, we've proven that it's not, it's not going to work.
What's that now?
See, we've proven over, over seven, eight years that we've got a facility that doesn't attract.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you on that. I'm saying, I'm saying, yeah, I totally agree with you on that. And I agree with the, with the, with the basics, making sure that we take care of what we've got going. What I'm saying is, is that are we just going to do that and leave it there? Or can we take advantage of this opportunity and get a, get a board established that we can think about the future and how, what we are going to do down the road?
Here's my, my view then. When the VenueWorks contract runs out in 100 days or so?
December 1st.
December 1st. Then we, we go to the minimal in the short term until we, maybe some, your idea, whomever.
I'm there, I'm there.
Or Steamboat Days, or somebody steps in and says, we want to, we want to work something out with you. But in the meantime, I'm in favor of the minimal.
I'm there.
I am too. Again, though, with the understanding, civic music and some of these people would be well taken care of.
And that's, that is the basic minimum. That is getting those taken care of, right?
Yep.
Right.
And to me, I mean, if that number, if you say, well, to do the basics, to get them all taken care of and everything, it's going to be more like 150 instead of 120.
All right.
I wouldn't be surprised if it wasn't actually 200,000.
But still, we're ahead 200,000.
Yeah. All right. But let's keep the acts that we've got going.
We'll be going in the right direction.
And let's, again, I would like to explore, and I'd like to see some people send some emails. And I'd like to explore getting a board started and think about the future, what we're going to do with this auditorium. I just think it's something that needs to be done. So, and I've got some people in the audience that are paying attention. You guys know your friends. Talk to them tonight. Are we good?
So we're, are we basically inviting more people to come Monday to hash this out?
I'm not. I'm good with the, I'm telling you where I'm at right now. We're not voting, but.
So table it until when?
No, I'm not. I, I'm not. I'm good with that table. Where I am, this is just me. Where I am is let's, let's do the minimum. Let's get a board started and let's get that board going. And they can start working their magic and let's see what we come up with.
When are we going to do that?
What's that?
When are we going to get the board together?
I'd like to see.
Create a board.
I'd like to get that, I'd like to see that happen ASAP.
So when is that realistic? When can we, when?
The people.
When is that creation? So should we invite people to come? If you want to do this ASAP, if we want people to get involved.
I'm going to talk to that lady right there in the blue before I leave here. And.
If you look at how most of our boards are set up, it's by an ordinance process where you, where you have to decide what sort of authority are you giving them? What's, what are the, I mean, that's not something that you, that happens overnight. That's a several month process. In the meantime, I mean, that might be something that you're wanting to see occur. VenueWorks has, VenueWorks, I'm sorry. Steamboat Days has expressed a desire to talk about, is there a format where we can partner with the city to try to actively get this facility used, where we have some level of participation in how staffing would, would come together to, between the two. It would involve some level of cooperation between us. And it would probably, well, I can't say probably. It would require if, if we're asking, doing an arrangement where they were doing some of that marketing of it, some level of a subsidy to be part of that. But.
Yeah, right on.
But so then that would take care of your board idea because they already have a board. They're already involved in something.
Would you be interested in us working on a proposal with them and trying to get something that comes back to the council to?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And, and I got, we got an email from Don, and we had talked about this earlier, is packaging all three.
That's part of what we have, even when we spoke with Steamboat Days, was part of our concern is how do we market the three together?
Yeah.
Or manage the three together. But what were you going to say, Annie?
Just thinking about the, the various groups that do use it, you know, yearly, whether it's, you know, civic music, Steamboat Days, Snow Bowl, all of the groups that are local.
School districts.
School districts. I think it's important that maybe one or two people from all of the groups that hold a, you know, a good solid vested interest in this get together and they become part of this board or, you know, whatever we want it to be, whatever they want it to be. I think, to me, that seems like the best idea, really. If everyone from each one of these groups really wants to keep this building alive, or if they all want to find some sort of building somewhere else or what have you.
Kind of on a slightly different page there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You thinking just Steamboat Days?
Well, I'm thinking get the party started with Steamboat Days, to see what they have to offer.
I agree.
And also to reach out to some community people.
I would say I certainly don't want anyone else to feel excluded, like completely excluded.
The reason why I'm not 100% with you is because I don't feel like we really have to, just for the simple fact that we've made that perfectly clear, that that's what we want to protect. That's the bottom line, that we wanted to protect civic music and Snow Bowl. And we want them to know going forward that they, that they're protected. That's the basic.
That's exactly right, yeah.
I'm, I'm interested in hearing what Steamboat Days has to, what, I'm interested in, interested in, man, I can't talk tonight. I'm interested in hearing what Steamboat Days has to say. But I'm also, I'm also open to reaching out to people and saying, hey, are you, do you have an interest in the auditorium? And would you like to be interested in starting a board or getting on a board and, and starting that process as well, which I know will take some time.
So you're clear?
Well, at least to make, we can.
Here's, okay, let me, let me. Do Steamboat Days. Maybe Steamboat Days has the answer and then we won't have to go any further than that. But I still think it would be nice.
I think that, that there are other groups that have an interest in at least making sure their voice is heard through that process. And it, as we work on, and, and we kind of, even when we met with Steamboat Days the other day, we kind of talked about wanting to make sure that some of those kind of concerns were addressed. And I, I think that means that the other groups that have a vested interest need to make contact with, make more contacts with us and make sure that we get any concerns that they want to make sure get addressed.
Certainly. That's.
Answered through that process.
That's my concern. Because I don't want anyone to feel alienated.
I thought that I'd spoke with every, I thought that I spoke with every group from Burlington that, that does business down there. And I thought that everybody, I didn't get anything that would tell me any different that we.
There's, there are concerns that we, that I think pretty much every group would want to make sure was at least part of that process.
Yeah.
If nothing, if nothing more.
That makes sense. We're good?
Yeah. So long as, yeah.
I think we're good moving forward. We're good. Okay. We're about done. Last one is number three. We had city manager replacement. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to pass on this discussion item. We're going to, we're going to table that. And we're just going to table it. So, Mr. Tisland?
Is that okay with everybody?
I'm sorry. Is that all right if everybody, with everybody, I prefer to table that for right now.
I was going to suggest the same.
Thanks, bro. Sorry about that. Mr. Tisland? Council lady?
Good. Thank you.
Mayor Protell?
Mr. McGregor.
That was his professional voice, too. And did you notice how you do that? Mr. McGregor?
Yes, sir.
Tell me about West Avenue.
Tell me about West Avenue, West Burlington Avenue.
Roundabout?
Roundabout.
Well, it will be officially open tomorrow morning.
Are you sure?